Yes, it's indicating that we're off air. We are having a technical issue, so we're going to... We appreciate everybody's patience as we tried this virtual board meeting for the first time, and we will get it right. It might just take a couple of minutes.
Okay, we're back online.
Mr. Pulsifer? I'm gonna go on. Mrs. Statz?
Here.
Ms. Trujillo?
Here.
And Dr. Sasan?
Here.
Have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and to the republic
and to our God
indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Don't forget to mute yourselves until roll call or until you want to say something.
Okay, thank you. We have the correspondence as listed, so next we will have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody, Mr. Handler and his tech team, for getting us up and running very quickly on this virtual, mostly virtual, board meeting. So if this works, then we'll see how the next several weeks take us, and we may have to do this again. So we thank everybody for working with us, and we're trying to practice social distancing as recommended by the governor, and so that's why those of us here are sitting at least six feet apart. Also, I'd like to send a big shout out and thank you to the community as we continue to navigate the limits of COVID-19. As COVID continues to come to us, we will certainly do our best to get it out to the community as soon as possible. The next thing on superintendent's report is the tentative budget presentation, which Mr. Mahmoud and I will present this evening. And you can write in with any questions, or we can have forum for questions. And I will, we will try to make sure we tell you what slide we're on, because we know there's a little bit of a delay on the livestream. So this is the 2021 tentative budget presentation at the board meeting of March 16, 2020. So we're going to go to slide two. The budget calendar, this budget started in October, where we began our public input at board meetings, we distributed all the allocations to the budget managers, and then we started putting this budget together. Now, when we started this, we knew at that time that minimally we were losing about a million dollars in state aid. And as we go on, you'll know whether that we got lucky and we didn't lose that much, but we'll talk about that as time goes on. In October, business administrator and the assistant business administrator reviewed all the input from the budget managers and went back, looked them, figured out exactly what it was they needed. And then we met, myself, the business administrator, the assistant business administrator, reviewed the full budget and prepared for all of the committee meetings that took place in February in March. At that time, all each board committee met to review the allocation. We received our state aid allocation notice at that time. And finally, the Department of Ed opened the budget software so that I and Nandisuke could start entering the budget. In March, we continued the committee meetings with the board. We reviewed the draft tentative budget for tonight's meeting, all in preparation for tonight's meeting. And then, remember, this is just a draft budget. So while we have, a tentative budget, so while we have to submit it to the county within a certain timeframe, which is why we're doing this this evening, we can continue to have meetings. The board will continue to review and suggest any potential revisions or changes for the final budget hearing, which will take place on April 27. I'm gonna go to slide three. So some opening thoughts. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board and the budget managers for helping us develop a balanced and responsible budget. As I said, when this budget started, the development of this budget started, we off the top knew we were losing another million dollars in state aid. And then we were faced with a whole host of other issues. I'd also like to send a big shout out to both the HEA and HPSA for helping us to realize huge savings in healthcare while providing quality healthcare and not without diminishing the quality of services provided to our staff. Again, I want to emphasize that this is a tentative budget. The budget may be modified based upon the board committee meetings and any community input on the district website and public hearings up until the final budget approval date of April 27. The budget resolutions on tonight's agenda include the tentative budget approval, the travel maximum, and the withdrawal from the maintenance reserve as per the executive county superintendent requirement. I'm going to go to slide four. So entering into a budget like this, especially after a year that everybody was challenged with last year, we, the board has some major budget goals. We wanted to maintain current programs, and truly, we wanted to maintain the positions. We wanted to minimize the appropriation reductions for the budget managers and provide a thorough and efficient education for all of our students. We wanted to either maintain or decrease class sizes where possible and increase professional development while it's not up to the level of it as it was several years ago, and a little bit help. And then, of course, we wanted to utilize whatever reserves we could where possible. I am going to move to slide five, and Mr. Mahmoud is going to take over.
Thank you, Dr. Intunez. On slide five, we are showing the board, based on our ASSA, which is a requirement that it's all of our students that are in our building as of, in this case, October 15, 2019. What we wanted to do is show you a comparison based on last year and this year according to the ASSA. That is just a snapshot picture. So between October 15 and today, there could be additional students on our roster. However, the funding for those students would not be included in the state aid allocation formula. So we just want to bear that in mind. This snapshot is really equates to the formula allocation. So the two numbers that we want to highlight or the difference, as of October 15, 2018, we had 7,411.5 students on the ASSA. On October 15, 2019, there is an increase. We're at 7,444.5. So we are looking at an increase based on the ASA, ASSA, of 34 students. Mind you, there is some development that's going on in town, and that number is fluid, and that'll change. But it does show that there's growth in the district, and we believe there'll be additional growth as well.
Slide six.
Slide six is an overview of the funding, the funds, based on the general fund. So you'll see on the general fund that we're increasing approximately $3.3 million. And we'll go through the revenue side to exactly identify what the revenue looks like and what the appropriations look like to show why we're increasing by that much money. Grants and entitlements are also going up a slight bit, but bear in mind, and we'll get to this as we go further into the presentation, that we are budgeting according to state guidelines. Our grants are at 85%. We are required to do that by code, so the grants are not at their full allocation. And when I say grants, I'm talking about title grants and IDEA. Our debt service, based on our amortization table, is actually going down by 132,636. Just bear that in mind, and as we go through revenue, I'll talk a little bit more about debt service. So overall, the budget is increasing by $3.2 million. As Dr. Intunez said earlier, our state aid loss, if you look at the 2000, in 1920, we lost $526,434. We cut 56 positions. In 2020, 21, this tentative budget, we are losing $745,119. That is less than what we anticipated, and we have zero positions that we're proposing to cut. I will now go to slide seven. Slide seven will share the budget highlights as it pertains to the revenue side only. For the revenue, we are increasing and going to our 2% cap. The district is unable at this point to take any of the waivers that we've taken in the past. So we will not be taking a healthcare waiver. As a matter of fact, we are not eligible for a healthcare waiver. And the same thing for enrollment adjustment waivers. We did that last year. We are not eligible for it currently. There is, as we said, with the reduction in state aid, we're gonna give you the real numbers as terms of, we talked about numbers. We were anticipating $1,069,836 originally of a reduction, and we received $745,119. We are still working with the state to find out exactly where that adjustment is. We are not there yet. We're still working with that. Also in this budget, we are doing something very different. We are withdrawing $500,000 from maintenance reserve. If the board recalls, last year, for the first time ever, we created a maintenance reserve account, and we put $500,000 in that account. We are legally within our bounds to remove that money, and that money came from excess surplus. We were fortunate, we landed with a bigger surplus than we expected. Now, in order to help balance this budget, we are removing that maintenance reserve surplus. What that does, it reduces the maintenance budget, so we're legally allowed to withdraw it and then use that money towards the operating maintenance budget. Some small things to also go through on the revenue side, our pay-to-play and building usage fees will not increase. Our technology Chromebook insurance will decrease from $60 to $45. Summer technology Chrome rentals will also decrease from $40 to $25. I will now go to slide seven. I'm sorry, eight. We wanted to share with the board and the public the main budget drivers, the numbers that drive our budget in total. Currently, 77% of our budget goes towards salary and benefits. 6% of our budget goes towards transportation. 3% of our budget goes towards special education. And 4% of our budget goes to buildings and grounds. I am now going to slide nine. We will talk about appropriations or expenditures and the highlights of that category. As Dr. Intunez mentioned earlier, we are, we did receive an extensive amount of savings in moving from private Horizon to the State Health Benefits Plan. Additionally, we are funding in this budget the curriculum in math, and it's a revision to that curriculum. We will be fully funding that revision. We also are reducing our contingency. Last year, we put a solid amount of contingency in there. This year, we're reducing that contingency by more than half. And we are comfortable with that reduction in contingency because of the run rate that we're looking at currently and because of the fact that our surplus last year certainly came in a little bit higher, or actually, a lot higher than we initially anticipated. In this budget, we will be including two full-time teachers on the special education side. We will be including one part-time teacher and one part-time assistant, instructional assistant, and those are due to IEP mandates. The board really doesn't have a choice. It's funding positions that are mandated for us to fund. We also, in this budget, we are keeping up with our overall technology plan, and we are being consistent with the overall multi-year technology plan. In that plan, we are looking to refresh, actually renew staff devices, refresh them. The existing devices will be turned over into additional staff on the clerical side that will receive those devices. So while we're updating, we're still using the ones that we have, they will not be discarded. Also, on the technology side, based on the technology plan, we will be putting in brand-new classroom projectors for K-8. And the reason why we are expanding on the projectors is the current lifespan of our projectors, or the current usage, is between eight and nine years old at the moment. Our old, our projectors are beyond their useful life. We're having difficulty finding parts, finding vendors that can replace light bulbs, so we really don't have a say in terms of the replacement, unfortunately, and the projectors are widely used throughout the district. We are doing something with the substitute budget in terms of actualizing expenditures. In the past few years, we have underbudgeted our substitute, overall substitute budget. This year, we're actualizing it based on run rates. So we know what it's gonna cost us at the end of the year. We're putting enough money to cover that, rather than at the end of the year, we make an adjustment and add all that money back. So we're just making this, as Dr. Sasan had said throughout the committee structures, a very realistic budget. On the position side, we are looking to talk to the board, and in this budget is, and we ran this through all committees, we are looking to add what we call a .5 accounts payable position and a .5 transportation assistance position. We believe that during the cuts last year, we bit off more than we can chew. We know now for a fact that with all the problems in transportation, we just don't have the resources to handle the issues that some of our contractors are presenting to us. For example, when we come in every morning, there is almost five or six routes that one contractor tells us, "I can't do." So we get, we basically, this is, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, that puts pressure on a transportation department where there's only two people there. It's only Lisa Bennett, and we have Cindy Harcher. And Lisa Bennett, nine times out of 10, is getting on a bus herself to transport students. So that leaves one person in that transportation offices from 6:00 a.m. we start to approximately 7:00 p.m. We absolutely bit off more than we can chew. And later in this presentation, we're gonna talk about how we're saving $134,000 in overall transportation by bringing in additional buses. We're hoping that we can use this part of this position to cover some of the savings, to cover this position. On the accounts payable side, there's a new finance law. We are averaging anywhere between $7 and $13 million in bills and claims. We just cannot pay that many bills with one person. And as I said earlier, we bit off more than we can chew. So our objective is to add that position back. Technically, the board took away one full-time accounts payable, well, the administration and board decided, in the budget reductions, to take away 1.5 positions. We took away an accounts payable position and a .5 transportation position. We are asking, not for the 1.5, we're asking for one, to restore back the operations and to respond to community needs on both ends. We accounted for in this budget as well, breakage. Typically, the number that we accounted for is lower than what we're overall anticipating. But again, as Dr. Intunez instructed, both Ms. San Giuliano and myself, we are in a position where she wanted us to be creative and to really work on not letting anybody go. Our directive was to not letting anybody go, to work on maintaining what we have, and if there's room, for example, in the curriculum budget, to do something legally we're required to do, and revise our math curriculum, we're also doing that. In this budget, there is a reduction of the Buildings and Grounds Department, and that primarily is due, I think, Mr. Gillette, when he reported out in the past, when we went through our budget manager presentations, that's primarily due to an ESIP reduction in terms of our lease payments. But it is an overall reduction when you look at that whole budget. For the record, as far as courtesy busing and subscription busing, I'm sorry, we are on, thank you, Dr. Intunez, we are on slide 10. For the record, as far as courtesy busing and subscription busing, it will all remain the same. We will not be taking away any additional courtesy busing. However, what exists today in terms of the high school walkers with courtesy busing will remain the same. As I mentioned earlier, with transportation, we are in this budget planning on buying five new buses. We already bought three this year, if you remember, an additional five buses with a savings, board members, of 130, about $134,000. So we, by bringing in additional buses, not only do we have more control of our drivers, we'll have more control of our routes, and I believe we will start the path of getting more buses in on time so that our students are not late and they get home at the scheduled time they're scheduled to get home. So this is a big plus for us. And what we're doing also is we're putting our contractors on notice that we, you know, enough is enough. If we can do it ourselves and save some money, we will do so. We are also looking in this budget to replace two special needs vans that unfortunately, their useful life has expired, and it costs us more money to try to keep those vans running. It's almost impossible. So those vans, it's part of our fleet, the useful life, and what we, what we mostly do with those two vans, actually, all we do is transport special needs students. This is something that we brought up to all of our committees. There is an increase in our charter school appropriations. We are required by state to pay for these charter schools, so there is an increase of approximately $124,000. That is something that takes away from the public side of education, so just bear with that, that we were less in appropriations by $124,000. We are adding to this budget two new teaching positions. That is to reduce class sizes. And while we don't have the grade levels yet, we are working on that, but that is really good news that, again, in a year that we experienced a state aid reduction, we're really limiting a lot of the ability for us to have money, because we don't have any waivers, but we still are able to add two teaching positions and reduce class sizes. As Dr. Intunez said earlier, we're also increasing our professional development expenditures, not by a lot, but certainly, we believe that this professional development is important. We've heard that with budget input, and we are adding some money for that purpose in this budget. With the help of Mr. Handler, we were able to have a reduction in our copier lease expenditures. We negotiated below state contract, and I really applaud Joel for working with us and getting all of our, all of our lease copiers. Not only did we get state-of-the-art machines, but we also saved approximately $25,000 for that. There is going to be a reduction of summer work. I just want to put on record that that does not mean that we're cutting the ESY program. That remains intact. And also, our summer enrichment program will remain intact. That is self-sustaining. We are not cutting those two programs. What we are looking to cut is things like, additional things that principals use throughout the summer, whether it's clerical staff, bookroom, things like that. What we believe we're doing with putting a cap on it, it just limits the expenditures, and again, it helps with what Dr. Intunez charged us with is kind of being creative, limiting certain appropriations so that we don't let staff go. I am now moving to slide 11, which is the tax impact on both Hillsborough and Millstone residents. So for a home that's assessed at the same value it was last year, I'd like to repeat that. For a home that was assessed at the same value it was last year, the Hillsborough tax rate is, in 2019, was 1.598. In 2020, the tax rate will be going down to 1.588. So what we have, based on the tax assessor's information regarding the average household, is now up to $414,300. And that person who owns a home that's assessed at that value will see a tax decrease for the school portion side only of 41, it's a tax decrease of $41 per year, and that comes out to a decrease of $3 a month. For the second year in a row, school taxes for the Hillsborough Township residents have gone down. I want to repeat that. For the second year in a row, school taxes, only the school tax portion, has gone down for the second year in a row. Millstone, for the Millstone tax rate in 2019, the tax rate was 1.873. It has, in 2020, it has gone down to 1.568. The average house from the Millstone tax assessor is $331,196. So for that average household, they will see a tax decrease for school taxes only of a decrease of $1,010 per year, and that comes out to $84 a month. Just on a side note, I'd like to mention, and we talked about this when we got out there, to talk about the referendum, that this not, this, these tax, or this tax impact for both Hillsborough and Millstone, does not include debt service for the $34.5 million that we took on on December 10th after that referendum was passed. So as a reminder, in 2020, 21, that's the year of the overlap where there will be an increase in debt service. In 2023 through 2041, the tax impact for debt service will be based on the new debt, which includes the referendum. I would like to go to slide 12 now, which talks about next steps. So I'm going to be optimistic and say, when the board approves the tentative budget tonight, that the business office tomorrow and the next day, we have, between the next couple of days, there's lots of work that we have to put together for the county office. We will be submitting this budget for review and approval by the executive county superintendent. The board, as Dr. Intunez said, will have other opportunities in a committee, in committee meetings, to refine the budget before the final budget hearing on April 27, 2020. Obviously, the public is encouraged to continue to provide us feedback, and also, we encourage community input on our link on our website, and we continue to be open to comments and questions as well if you have moving forward. And Dr. Intunez, that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So every year, at about mid-year, we are invited or requested to go to the county office to do a mid-year budget review. And that's because the county wants to ensure that we'll be able to finish out the year in a financially, in a fiscally healthy situation, that we could pay our bills and make our payroll. And so this is the first year that I accompanied Mr. Mahmoud and Ms. San Giuliano, and it was, it was interesting, because we received a letter from the executive county superintendent commending us for certain things. And I, I said to Mr. Mahmoud, "This is, this doesn't seem right to me. We're being commended for something that I don't believe that, while it shows that we use our money very well and efficiently, I'm not sure that we should be proud of where we stand in some of these things." For example, like this, I thought this was positive. Despite a significant reduction in state aid last year and again this year, we continue to provide, according to the county, a highly effective, thoroughly efficient education. Now, we believe we do that with what we have, with our, with our staff members. But, okay. However, our faculty to administration ratio is significantly greater than the state median. So out of 101 districts, we're ranked third, which means that we have more faculty to administrators than 98 other districts, K-12 districts in the whole state. I'm not sure about that. Classroom instruction purchase services, purchase services per pupil costs were significantly less than the state median. So we, for, per pupil, for classroom instructional services, we are ranked second, second out of 101, which means, out of K-12 districts, which means that 99 other districts are spending more money per pupil on classroom instruction purchase services. Our students to administration ratio was greater than the state average. We were ranked seventh out of 101 K-12 districts. We were ranked seventh out of 101 K-12 districts. So we have more students to administrators than most of the other districts in the state. This is an important one. Our legal services per pupil were less than the state median. So we're ranked 12th of 101 districts. So we're spending less on legal services per pupil than all those other districts. Maybe that is a good thing. Operations and maintenance of plan per pupil costs were less than the state median. So we're spending less than the state median on the maintenance of the facilities. Out of 100, we're ranked 13th out of 101 K-12 districts. And of course, we will continue to work to decrease the academic disparity that exists among our economically disadvantaged and our subjects of color and our specialized students. In conclusion, it's important to note that, as Mr. Mahmood says, it wasn't, we didn't have any magic, there wasn't a magic fairy wand. It was the significant savings from private healthcare to the school employee health benefit, healthcare, that with that savings, we were able to sustain programs and positions. Next year, we are anticipating a state aid reduction of 1.3 million. This year, we got lucky, but there were many other districts in the state that lost more than was originally anticipated. And so we hope we're not one of those districts next year. So right now, we're looking at a reduction of 1.3. Hopefully, it will be like this year, it will be less than that. And of course, we will continue our work with our legislators to try to receive any additional state aid or decrease in our reduction. And we've already become that. We've already started that work with our state legislators. And we are going to go to the final slide, which is slide 15, which is just a thank you slide. And I believe that if the board members have any comments or questions, they can, we'll chat into or speak to and be recognized by Dr. Swetson.
So yeah, so what we anticipated doing this evening is that we were going to fully discuss this agenda item at this time. And then we hope to move the whole of the agenda at once, including this item, for board approval. And so at this time, we want to fully, we want to make sure everybody's questions are addressed, and then we will move this as part of the agenda. If you do want to be recognized, if you have any questions for Mr. Mahmood or for Dr. Intunez, please raise your hand in the Google chat and I will recognize you. The other important thing to consider is whether or not any of the other agenda items are things that you would like to separate for discussion when we move those items. So please let me know if there's anybody who would like to be recognized by me at I'm not seeing anything in the Google chat. Is that the case? Ah, Jean, you have a comment. Yes, please. Unmute yourself and please speak, Jean. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Thank you for the budget presentation. I wanted to just make two, I guess, or ask a question. So tonight, the tentative budget that we're voting on, we are really only voting on going to the 2% cap. Is that correct? Just on the number?
Correct.
And then my second comment was from the HR committee where we had talked about the, I guess, the position that, you know, just like Ayman had said tonight, basically the highlights of it. I wanted to make a comment about the possibility of looking into reinstating or the nursing supervisor position, given the health issues that are going on in the district right now. And I had a thought afterwards from HR is that at the municipal lines meeting, I remember one of the members saying something to the effect of like that the K-12, because we had PE supervisor, K-12 PE supervisor position had been eliminated, that the consistency among the curriculum was not there these days. So my question is whether or not, like as you done with the accounts payable and transportation, if there was a way to do a PE supervisor slash nursing supervisor position, or just kind of throwing that out there. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Notes are being taken here, just so you can see. I'm sure that will be taken into consideration as we proceed. Anybody else have any other comments or questions for, on the budget at this time? Okay, I don't see any. So I think at this time, we'll go to, we'll go to committee reports. And then if anybody comes up with any questions on those or on the budget while we're doing that, we'll entertain more questions before we go to the public hearing. So for committee reports, why don't I start with governance and let our other committee chairs gather up your notes while I do that. So the governance committee met on March 9th. All members were present. We discussed the possibility of not using as much paper during the board meeting and only having one copy of the agenda and attachments available for review, with the understanding that board members review the agenda and attachments prior to coming to the meeting. And if there's any particular item that the committee chair feels is necessary for the board members to have during that meeting, they could alert their administrative contact prior to the meeting, to request a copy. We also discussed sidebar agreements with OTA and HPSA on the State Employee Health Benefit Plan that we actually acted on at the last meeting. We also discussed preparations for the half-day for teacher prep to plan for the health-related closures, which happened last week. And then we discussed the tentative budget and the athletic referendum very briefly. So that was it in governance. Mr. Gillette, can you talk about operations next?
Yep, I'm ready to go.
Thank you.
Operations met on March 11th. We had a pretty big agenda, but I'll try to get through it quickly, and I know we're trying to do things quickly tonight. So you'll see on the agenda tonight, there's an item, there's a walk-on item to borrow some money short-term so we can get started quickly on some of the roofing projects and other projects for the referendum that we're doing, that we'd like to do this summer. So we haven't issued all of the, or any of the bonds for the 34 million dollar referendum. So the first thing that our architect talked about was that roofing projects need to get started, and those contractors are going to need some payments soon after those contracts are awarded. So that's the first thing that you'll see is on tonight's agenda. We also talked to the architect about the plan for the reconfiguration of the parking lot at Sunnymeat School. He came up with a really good plan. We took a look at a rendering of it. And of course, you know, as most of these things go, when you're repaving something, you're going to have to deal with conditions of impact on, you know, by wetlands and things like that. So he's working through that now, but the plan looks really good. We're excited about it. I know the Sunnymeat community is going to be very happy with it. We had some sort of bad news with maybe a little bit of a silver lining in it about the proposed athletic referendum, as I reported at a previous meeting. The operations committee discussed with our athletic director and Dr. Intunez, the need for some projects to do with athletic facilities. Athletic facilities were not included at all in the December 2019 referendum. We came up with projects amounting to about 3.1 million dollars. Half of those projects are inside the high school and half of the projects are outside the high school. The committee prioritized the outdoor projects, which mainly consist of refurbishing the track and some areas around the track, what they call the D zones. And also the tennis court, which needs extensive repair and pretty much replacement and some of the other things around the tennis court. That was about one and a half million dollars. We prioritized that and were hoping to do a referendum to borrow one and a half million dollars on a one-year note and receive about a third of it from the state in debt service aid and pay the 1 million dollars that we would, be our responsibility to pay that back in one year from the capital reserve budget after referendum would hopefully pass. So Mr. Wasney made some inquiries to the state about that, whether we would be eligible for the debt service aid. And the bad news is that, according to the vagaries of the state, how they're feeling this week, the highest priority projects, which were the outdoor projects, we were told by the state Department of Education that those would not receive the debt service aid. So that was a little bit of a blow. The indoor projects would receive aid, but those were not priority. If we did those with the aid, we wouldn't have enough money left in our capital reserve to do the other projects without the aid. So moving forward, we're going to take one more stab at it. We talked to our bond counsel, Ms. Gorab, and she advised us to take one more stab at the state, try to get someone different on the phone this time, I think she said. But doesn't seem likely that they'll turn around their position on this. We have the funds available. If we just scale that down just a little bit, we had a major item would be the press box at the football grandstands. But we don't have to do that. We can take a couple of things out and still do the track and the areas around the track and the tennis courts, just out of, just straight out of the capital reserve account. The one silver lining I talked about would be that we wouldn't have to wait a whole year to do it. If it's the case that we're not going to borrow money, there's no reason, you know, if we're not going to get debt service aid, we don't need to borrow the money. We could do it this summer possibly. So that would be one silver lining, is that we might be able to do this project this year. I'm going to report again about this when we hear definitively back from the state about whether or not we're going to get that debt service aid after we take one more quick stab at it. Okay, sorry about the long, lengthy report on that. I just wanted to get that all out. We also talked about the tentative budget, as we're talking about tonight. Catholic Charities, as you know, runs the after-care and before-care programs at our schools. They have a contract with us to do that. We receive about 70,000 dollars a year in revenue from them as part of the contract. The YMCA approached us, as they have in years past, about working with the district for various programs. So they're most interested, of course, in getting the contract for the before-care and after-care. We're already under contract with Catholic Charities. They've already solicited for next September, so we're not willing to break that at this time. But YMCA also had some other ideas about working with the district. And Mr. Mahmood is going to continue discussion with the YMCA and to see what other ideas they had besides before-care and after-care. The last thing on the agenda was, well, two more things. We're also continuing to work on the HES playground. It's not quite ready to have a grand opening yet. And Mr. DeLuca reported that we're going to go ahead with two water bottle filling stations at Aris. And that was the whole report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mrs. Paz, can you give the report for the education committee meeting?
Sure. I'm very happy to report that the education committee met on March 10th. We had a very lengthy discussion. First item was the approval of a book called Friendship According to Humphrey, which is a wonderful book about friendship and will reinforce our character education program. So that is on the agenda for tonight's approval. Humphrey is a hamster, by the way. We also did a tentative budget review and we covered all of the areas related to education that were presented by Mr. Mahmood tonight. And I'd like to thank the board for its anticipated support for our budget items, particularly in the areas of curriculum, technology, and special ed. Those areas took a big hit last year, and I think it's very, very important, as we've seen in this emergency, to support those areas this year. We also discussed our summer advancement credit program. This is something that we promised to a group of parents who are very interested in doubling up in math during the regular school year, and we were unable to accommodate that. And we promised a summer program for this year. We are now delivering that. The program is apparently staffed, and we were planning to begin registration this week. Given the current situation, that may be delayed a little bit, but watch on our website and watch for notices about when that will be available. Hopefully, the courses will start in July. And we will have Algebra II honors, math analysis honors, geometry honors. And in addition to the math classes, we are going to have 60 credit hour courses, which are going to be financial literacy, introduction to culinary arts and baking, and public speaking. And we're excited to be able to provide that program to our community. That's the education report.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any of the reports thus far? I believe, Jean, Mrs. Stat, you have a question about the education committee report or comments?
Yes, it's about the summer courses that we're offering for the honors math courses. As Ms. Paz said, it's because they're not allowing honors students to double up in math. And what I'm concerned about is that, as I've mentioned before, there's at least one period this year where there are three out of two CP classes, two that are very small sizes that could be combined, opening up space for another section for an honors class. And that's just something I just happen to stumble on, and I'm just, and I wonder if there's room elsewhere to combine sections so that we would have room to offer the opportunity for honors students to double up in math. I think it was said last year that they total the equivalent two sections. And it concerns me because now they're learning to learn, especially, these are students that are obviously motivated to excel. And I just want to make sure we're exploring all the other options before we resort to having something offered in the summer where the cost and the time might be prohibitive for some students.
Thank you, Mrs. Stat. Any other comments on any of the other three committee reports before the HR committee Okay, I see none on the Google chat. So I'm going to give the human resources committee report because Mr. Pulsifer is driving at this time. So the HR committee met on March 12th with all members present, in person or via phone. And Mr. Mahmood went through a budget review for the committee, similar to what we shared this evening, specifically highlighting those pieces that were appropriate for the HR committee as well. We also discussed several personnel matters, and we reviewed a new policy, number 1642, which is in relation to the new earned sick leave law, which allows part-time employees and substitutes to earn sick leave, a sick leave over the period of the year. And so that policy will be on a future board agenda as we work through those issues. We also discussed fully the daily substitute rate. So currently, Hillsborough pays 90 dollars a So currently Hillsborough pays $90 a day for a substitute teacher, and neighboring towns pay much more than that, usually around $105, some starting lower and going higher if you worked more or, you know, so we evaluated that. And it's the board, the committee's recommendation to, for the board to adopt a 105 per day effective rate for the new school year in September. We are currently, one thing to consider that we're very interested to learn was that we need about, around 100 substitutes a day, and we have oftentimes only about a 70% fill rate. And so when that happens, then other teachers are tasked to fill in those classes, which is both taxing on our, our teachers as well as more costly, and, and it's not great for the students either. So we feel that if we increase the rate to equal those or exceed those of neighboring towns, then especially those substitute teachers in Hillsborough will come to Hillsborough instead of leaving town for an increased rate of test. So that will, we will take action on that at some point, but that is a recommendation from the HR committee. We deferred further discussion on the sick or vacation time payout because that is something that we're still getting legal opinion on as well. So that is the HR committee meeting minutes. If anybody has any questions about that, I can answer them, or Mr. Pulsifer, who is on the line, can answer them. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, I don't see any of those, so, oh, there you go. You're, you're really breaking up, and we can't really understand you. Can you try, can you try again? I think it's because of the phone. Can you try again? Your cell phone? Or perhaps... Unfortunately, Chris, we are only hearing about every other syllable, so it's almost impossible for us to determine what you're saying. Hold on. You weren't saying anything to that. Okay, thank you. You know, if at some point you want to, you want to chime in again, maybe you're in a dead, sort of a dead spot, so hopefully we can catch up with you a little bit later. Are there any other board comments on any of the committee meeting reports? Oh, we have one more, we have one more report, which is communications. Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Yes.
Thank you, Anne.
Are you able to hear me?
Loud and clear.
You can hear me. Okay. The communications committee met on March 11th, and all were in attendance, and we are discussing a lot of business because we were reconvening after our December meeting, so we had a lag of time there. But Dr. Antunes updated the committee on how the communications were going to go forward with the coronavirus. And we've had a lot of changes since our meeting last Wednesday as a result of the rapid advancement of conditions in our whole situation here. So at the time, we had talked about weekly updates, but I, I see Dr. Antunes, and I must congratulate her for being on top of this with a cellular approach to communicating to the whole community of Hillsborough. Thank you for that. The committee also was looking at updates on the referendum projects and how we would get those out, but we're waiting for timelines and frequently asked questions from our architect to be able to update the website and share that with the community. And right now, the priority really is, is about our virus attack. So hopefully, that will get up and be in place soon, but it is not, as I say, the primary priority right now. Dr. Antunes also shared with us that we're going to begin rescheduling teacher and student achievements at upcoming board meetings when we get a chance to reconvene in person. And now that we have the tentative contract, that was what was holding us back from actually having those enjoyable times when we got to share things with the community about the achievements in our school. So those will be, again, taking place as soon as we can. The discussion on how to highlight the Board of Education meetings and upcoming board meetings for the press was one thing that we discussed. We felt maybe there was a kind of a lag in what happens for our district in that respect. And of course, as the public is aware, we lost our communications person for the board who was doing that for us last year. So we are trying to figure out ways to fill in that, and we agreed that not every meeting has things that would necessarily be community interest items, but certainly some of them would be highlighted, and perhaps maybe we can send a press release to the Beacon and the Courier News. And we talked about perhaps building an email list of graduating seniors so we can keep them in the loop as they move on to college and further events in their life, so we can keep in touch. And our, there was to be a parent workshop on social media, which was scheduled for this Wednesday. However, with the updates from the governor, I'm sure that will be rescheduled at a later time, if it can be. We talked about the pros and cons of a later start time for the high school, how to communicate important items to all the board members, and progress towards the high school's 50-year celebration. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any board member have any questions or comments on the communications committee meeting report? Okay, seeing none, I will turn to the public hearing on the superintendent's contract. Do you have a couple of public... Does anybody have any comments on it?
I think they could job.
Thank you, that was Jim Cox giving his... The, and we have comments from the board and the public, the action agenda. So I will, will I read this whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. So I will read the, the comment section. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board goes. Towards the end of the meeting, there is another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comments, please state your name and address. There is a three-minute time limit for speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but off, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public sessions. Do I have any comments from the public? We did receive some emails. That will be included in our correspondence with respect to the budget input today. So I refer board members to those emails. Seeing none, are there any comments from the board on anything on the action agenda before we move the, the whole agenda? Okay, I'm seeing none. So we will now move the full agenda. Dr. Antunes?
Okay. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the agenda as wine items for the agenda of the whole as follows. 9.1 to 11.8. So that will include a motion to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determination, motion to approve the fiction book, motion to approve the addendum to the employment agreement of the acting superintendent, motion to approve the revised leave of absence and contract changes, motion to approve appointments, motion to approve a buddy and extra coverage, motions to approve revised six-period coverage as well as the monthly bill, motion to approve the 2020-2021 tentative budget, motion to approve the travel reimbursement expenses, motion to approve a resolution awarding the contract for the HVA C project, and motion to approve, to authorize a withdrawal from the maintenance reserve account, and to approve a settlement agreement with Millstone, motion to approve a resolution authorizing temporary notes, as Mr. Gillette talked about, and motion to approve an out-of-district placement.
Thank you. I'm assuming no discussion since I've asked about 12 times, but I'll ask again now and just give a few seconds before I ask for the roll call. I need a motion, actually, a motion and a second. So why don't I take the motion and a second, and then we'll, we'll pause a few minutes for...
So moved.
Thank you, and that was...
Judy Haas.
Judy Haas, okay. And I see that John Oliver tried to make the most as well.
He stuck into it.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so I'll give a few minutes for somebody to write in that they want to be recognized for comments, or a few seconds. Okay, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Charlie, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer? I'll take that as a yes. Mrs. Statz?
Yes.
Mrs. Trillo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we will open, the informational items is listed. We will open up the period for public comments and board comment now. Again, we very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. The first time is at the beginning of the meeting, the second time is now. Before you make your comments, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit for speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public sessions. Do I have any comments from the public? Seeing none, do I have any comments from the board? Okay, I don't see any. So before we adjourn, I would just like to say thank you all for your flexibility in holding this meeting as mostly virtual, and I think all in all, it went okay, except for not being able to hear Mr. Pulsifer's comments, which hopefully he will share with us at the next meeting. And stay tuned for future developments. I don't know what we're going to have to do with respect to future board meetings, but this actually worked pretty well with a lot of thanks to Mr. Handler, Mr. DeLuca, and their team. So with that, I will take my motion to adjourn. Yeah, I see Anne.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Chris and Anne.
Chris and Anne, yes.
Thank you.
And Judy...
There's a third.
Judy and John.
Hey! Of course.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. And I'm assuming there's no abstentions or anybody in not wanting to adjourn. Lovely virtual conference. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Stay safe.
Thank you, everybody.